Good evening. This is Luke Revan. I'm the Assistant Township Manager here at East Brandywine Township. Welcome to the regular April meeting of the Board of Supervisors, which is being hosted remotely only. I'm addressing you in my capacity as the online moderator for this. In a moment, I will turn the microphone over to Vice Chairman Winters, who will preside over tonight's meeting. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and to protect the health and safety of township officials in our residents, the board is conducting this meeting by webinar. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the township's YouTube channel. The township is continuing to provide essential services, but township is closed to the public. Members of staff, including myself, are present at the township building and will be operating the control panel for this webinar. Also joining us remotely are supervisors Ken Ader, Jason Winters, and Scott Skribner, as well as the township solicitor. Other parties joining us can hear me, but your own phones and computer microphones are muted, so we cannot hear you. Public notice of this meeting was advertised in the daily local news and posted on the township website. The agenda for the meeting was also posted on the website ebrandywine.org and appears on your screen now. The public notice provided information to enable members of the public to submit questions in advance to the supervisors by email. This evening, we will also have a way for members of the public who are joining us via the website anymeeting.com to offer comments in real time. To enable an organized meeting, we're using the following procedure. I ask that all participants wait to be recognized by the chairman before speaking. Prior to being recognized, you must ask me, acting as the moderator, to unmute your audio connection. You may request this at any time via the chat feature located on the left side of your screen. Each person recognized by the chairman should state their name and their address for the minutes. When recognized, please state your comment or question clearly. The chairman will then recognize an appropriate party to respond if necessary. I will now turn the meeting over to Vice Chairman Winters for the first agenda item.
Good evening. First agenda item is the resignation of Kenneth Ader as chairman, you know, chairman and vice chairman for the remainder of 2020. Now open up for discussion.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to appoint Vice Chairman, I'm sorry, make a motion to appoint Kenneth Ader to the position of member.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to appoint Jason Winters to the vice chair position.
Now, do I have a motion? Second?
Uh, I can second if you want to open up for discussion, I guess. As far as discussion points, you know, um, uh, I just want to thank, thank the board, uh, you know, as I did, as I mentioned last month, I stepped down for personal reasons and um, decided that the, the best to come back and best serve was to sit in the member position. And just ask that the two other board members find, um, you know, some common ground and so in some good, uh, order in order to move the township forward.
Thank you, Ken. So the next line item on the agenda, do we have any public comment on non-agenda items?
Well, we're going to have to appoint a chairman.
This is Tom. You did not vote on the vice chairman position.
Yeah, so I made the motion to, I made the motion to appoint Jason Winters as the vice chair.
And Ken seconded, but I don't think you voted.
For?
All in favor?
Correct.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm kind of a little confused. What was the motion?
The motion for Winters to be vice chair, seconded by Ken.
So the. I'm having a really hard time. Mine's gone to the end. I can hear every other word.
There is an alternate way for you to connect. You can use your phone for the audio portion. It'll take a moment for you to set up. Did you hear me just now?
I didn't. It's, it's gone like every other.
All right, I, I would encourage you to, if, if we could just take a technical moment. There's a dropdown next to the speaker. And it has a communication and it'll list the different devices that you can use to connect from their audio and video settings. There's an option on that pop-up to use dial-in for audio. Let me take, do a little demonstration here. All right, under the, the dropdown by your speaker, there is audio/video settings. And then dial-in for audio.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Very.
Okay, I can kind of. My phone speaker's not that great either. All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
It's a much better connection.
Okay, good. So I'm sorry. So what was the?
So the mo- motion was to appoint Jason Winters for the vice chairman. It was seconded by Ken Ader.
For the remainder of the year?
Correct.
Okay, because I was thinking that, um, it would be my turn in rotation to be chairman?
Okay, it was already seconded by Ken, so.
So, 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 I mean, I guess as far as format for this, you know, um, and I know the three of us haven't had a chance to talk through this. You know, what I'm looking for is to make, you know, for, for, uh, for the two of you guys to find common ground as far as, you know, chair, vice chair in order to run this. And I guess I just want to remind, uh, folks that the chair role, um, shares, shares an equal role as all board members, obviously, uh, but just simply, uh, you know, the main difference is, is coordinating, um, the, uh, in facilitating these meetings. So I don't know if you guys have any additional comments or thoughts on the best way to, uh, to handle this. Obviously, as, as the new guy here, I'm a little bit new to, uh, to these things.
Well, I think at this point, um, we didn't have much to comment before the motion, so, um, you know, I guess, you know, what do you, what do you want me to say?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Well, I guess I would just add, Jason, I mean, I mean, do you feel like, um, you, um, for the, for the remainder of this year would be able to sort of serve as vice and, you know, with the thought of flipping over to chair, um, on January 1st?
Well, I mean, I don't think that can be permitted anyway, but I mean, I'm, you know, I'm gonna, I said no because I don't agree with not being chair, but vice chair. I mean, if, you know, if you don't, you don't want to, you want to be a member, um, then that's fine. If that makes sense.
Yeah, again, uh, again, where I'm sitting is, is simply being member here. So, you know, again, I leave it to you guys to, to determine what, um, the most effective model is here.
Well, I just feel that, um, the, the two years leading up to, uh, this year, that we had some issues internally with the board and the point was when I brought to our chairman's attention, um, you know, zero things were done. And, you know, I know that just makes me think that I don't want anyone else to have to go through that and, um, do no offense, you know, to you, Kyle, but I just don't think that, um, that it was handled too well.
Kyle, are you open to Jason being, uh, the chair and yourself being the vice? Do you see that as a?
No, I'm not, but that's, you, you can, hey, Ken, it's going to be down to you, um, to decide.
Okay, well, um, you know, again, I guess it's, it's a, um, you know, I sit here in an impartial spot. You know, this is part of the challenge that I was, I was placed in, in January, um, which led myself to, to be the chair. Unfortunately, again, my time, uh, just didn't necessarily sort of allow for that. So I guess, again, you know, I'm not looking, you know, I was hoping that you guys would, you know, we're in a spot to find some commonality here. But, um, you know, I operate through, through sort of fairness and equity. Again, I don't really have a bias one way or the other, so I will, um, I guess just lean towards seniority. So, um, I'll, I'll lean towards, uh, Kyle, as you, as you're in your, your, your last two years of this term. And Jason's, as you start really the second, uh, third, uh, as you just became vice, um, I guess I'll lean towards that. So I will, uh, vote aye.
Okay, well, then I guess I can hand the meeting order to Kyle at this point.
All in favor? Aye.
Nay.
And then, um, I guess I'll let one of you two go ahead and make the motion for the appointment of the chairman.
All right, I guess, give a situation, I guess that'll be me. I guess I'll vote, uh, make the motion for Kyle as chairman for the remainder of 2020.
Any other comment? All in favor?
You need, you need a second. It's Tom, sorry.
Do I have a second?
I mean, I don't know how I'm supposed to second that, but I don't agree with it. So.
I'll second.
Kyle, you can vote for yourself.
Yeah, I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, so now we're going to go ahead and, um, turn it over. Non-agenda items and reminder that rules of conduct for the public meeting established by Resolution 2001-08, the time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Go ahead and, uh, Luke, I guess I'll turn it over to you for that because you'll be able to see if there are any public comment for non-agenda items.
Right, I solicited by the chat feature, um, people who might be interested in commenting at 6:34. It's, that was 10 minutes ago. I have no one interested in addressing the board for this agenda item, but I do have, uh, individuals interested in a later agenda item.
Okay. All right, so now I'm going to turn it over to the township solicitor for a public hearing to provide information and receive public comment on a potential open space acquisition. The township proposes to participate in the conservation easement on the following property, property of Shirebrook Brothers LLC, tax parcel 30-3-11, comma, 7.89 acres, and tax parcel 30-3-86 for 4.29 acres. I'll turn that over to Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you indicated, this is a hearing that we're required to have under the Open Space Lands Acquisition and Preservation Act. The township has a dedicated open space tax and before monies are expended from that fund, we must have this hearing to disclose to the public the intention of the board regarding spending money. The purpose of the hearing is to disclose the open space interest to be taken, the proposed open space benefits, and provide an opportunity for members of the public to make comments about the potential acquisition. As indicated on the agenda, the township proposes to partially fund the purchase of two parcels owned by Schrock Brothers Incorporated, Chester County UPI numbers 30-3-11 and 30-3-86. It's approximately 12 acres in total. Both parcels essentially parallel the Brandywine Creek. Oh, thank you, Luke. Uh, they're shown on the map that's now on the screen. The parcel 30-3-11, uh, it's proposed that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania would acquire that parcel. And the other parcel, it's proposed that the township would acquire fee ownership. Both would be acquired in fee ownership. However, the transactional details are not quite finalized yet. And it's just, it is possible that the township could take ownership of both parcels if it so desires. As I said, the total acreage is about 12.18 acres. And we're going to take fee ownership of those parcels. You may have seen that earlier today, we were notified that Chester County has awarded approximately $181,000 toward the project. The project is being overseen by Jack Steffaroo of Natural Lands Trust, and he's in the process of making application to DCNR to acquire additional funding. The purpose of the acquisition is to protect natural habitat, wildlife areas, and water resources, acquire habitats and the protection of scene views, and expand the network of protected areas. The property that's to the northwest, uh, joins Marsh Creek State Park. So the Commonwealth is interested in that parcel, and of course, so are we. The other parcel to the southeast, it's more or less water rights. It sort of straddles the Brandywine Creek. The township will take ownership of that. The township proposes to contribute $23,000 to the acquisition. And that would either be used, well, possibly for both reasons, actually, the consideration to be paid and also to help fund transactional costs. But this time, Mr. Chairman, it would be appropriate to open the floor to any questions or comments that the public might have about the acquisition.
Yeah, so Luke, if you wouldn't have a, if you have a chance to do that and open that up to the public and, and see if there's anything, um, we'll be happy to listen to that.
Bit a moment. I'm hearing no one. We can return to public comment. Is there, is there perhaps any, any discussion that the board wants to do, uh, to give individuals a chance to log in if they're so inclined? Tom, I know that's a little out of order.
Well, the, the board certainly can discuss it if they'd like or make comments. I, I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear. The board's welcome to make comments about the potential acquisition. And in the meantime, perhaps somebody else would like to make a comment.
Yeah, I would, I'll comment, you know, I'll comment. I think that it's a, it's great that the county was awarded a grant towards it for the $181,000. With that being said, I think that it would, it'd be prudent to, for the township, um, looking out in future planning to acquire fee simple for both parcels, um, as another access point, um, potential access point in the parcel northwest of the bridge. And, um, and not just the whole sliver that, you know, would match the existing parcel at the old Visick and Bottle Plant. So I think if we have that whole side and we have the other side as well, it's, it's good for, uh, scenic, uh, views driving by. And, you know, I understand there's not much more than one lot that could be built there, but it is, um, it would be nice to utilize the improvements that are already in place for future plans for the township.
And Scott, I ask you, since you're the township manager, anything that you see negative in this?
You're. Scott, no audio.
It sort of ruins the illusion. We do have social distancing here. That's a, but it doesn't, it ruins the illusion of, of, of being miles apart.
Sorry, I heard some feedback, so I muted myself earlier. Uh, I think for the, the $23,000 plus, uh, the, the acquisition of the, uh, water rights parcel is certainly, uh, a welcome addition to the Westick and property. I think the, uh, the other parcel, 30-3-11, um, because of its location and the access, I'm not sure that, uh, that really is, uh, I think it would be better served as part of Marsh Creek. We still get to see the view shed, uh, but they're responsible for the maintenance of it. So that's, that's my thought on both of them.
Okay.
But I think though, that, you know, as a township resident, um, it would be, you know, I think that the, the purchase of property, uh, for the freedman property that you can't see from the road, I believe, um, it would be costing township taxpayers less to purchase this property that you can see from the road and have an actual, you know, future of park to be able to get into the water there or fishing or even walk to the, to the creek itself. So I think that's, um, is that something that has to be? I know, uh, Jack had said that it's something we can decide, but it doesn't have to be today. Is it something that, um, is there a deadline to when we would have to?
Mr. Chairman, it's Tom, if I may. You're right, Mr. Winters, it does not have to be decided today. The current thinking is that the Commonwealth would take that parcel. But in my conversation with Jack, he doesn't see any impediment to the township taking the parcel if that's what you decide, uh, by the time this gets to closing. So it does not have to be decided this evening.
Okay.
And if, if I may, uh, chime in, if my recollection of the draft resolution before you, um, says that the, the, the fee simple disposition of the parcel in question, um, 3311 is worded as may and not shall?
That, that's correct.
Yeah, so there, there is, there is room there in the draft resolution.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll just throw in comment, just that, um, you know, as far as both parcels, I did have a chance to sort of, to check it out and then look at it. And I do, I agree. I think it's a great, beautiful piece of property. And anytime we have opportunity to secure waterfront property, uh, to maintain open space, it's a wonderful addition. So it's great to see the grants coming through and some of the work that, uh, has been done, uh, to date so far.
So Tom, would you like us to make a motion if we're good to go?
Right, Mr. Chairman, if there's, there's no further comment. We've prepared what I believe is Resolution Number 9 of 2020. And it includes several whereas paragraphs, which essentially recite what was just described at the hearing. And then the action item there is paragraph one, the board authorizes an expenditure not to exceed $23,900 from the township open space, space fund, to partially fund the acquisition by East Brandywine Township and/or the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, including transactional costs of properties owned by Schrock Brothers Incorporated, located along the Brandywine Creek, Chester County UPI numbers 30-3-11 and 30-3-86, comprising a total of approximately 12 acres. Paragraph two, the board further authorized the appropriate township official to execute and acknowledge the deeds and all documents necessary to finalize the transaction subject to restrictions acceptable to the township. So we would need a motion to adopt Resolution Number 9-2020.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 09 of 2020.
I'll second.
Anybody else have anything to say, Luke, yet?
I am confident there is no public comment.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to go to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, uh, Board of Supervisors, March 27th, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the previous Board Supervisor Minutes, um, of March 27th, 2020.
I'll abstain purely because I wasn't present.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, and the Planning Commission meetings for March 4th, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from March 4th, 2020.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, we already had a, a copy of the Treasurer's Report. If it's a minute to make sure everything's in order, just let me know.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to forego reading the account balances, um, as is the board's preferences for this, this format. I, I have one, um, item I'd like to draw your attention to. There is a new line item in the General Fund Budget Performance Report. And that is, uh, for, uh, expenses related to, um, COVID-19. Those may be reimbursable at a later date, so I've segregated those expenditures.
Understood.
I, I just have a couple of comments or questions, I guess, um, or just thoughts as well. Luke, the first question is just the, um, in, in light of all the, the COVID activity in, in the market economy right now, obviously, I think we have to do some forecasting and really think about how the rest of this year plays out. So I think generally speaking across, um, so I've been trying to do some forecasting related to that. And I think we need to, you know, as a whole, the, the staff and, and folks should really look at non-essential expenditures and, and thinking about what the impact of primarily the, uh, the earned income tax is going to be for our budget for the remainder of the year, because I think we do have to assume it's going to, uh, come down. Dennis, the Tax Collector, did send out just a, um, to the board members earlier today, uh, at my request, uh, just the current tax collections. There's a sizable amount that's, that's, that's variance, it's difference from the, the Treasurer's Report. Is, would that be related to April receipts not flowing through the, the, the accounting yet, you know, before the month ends at this point?
Well, I, I wouldn't, I don't feel, um, qualified to speak to collection trends since that is, that's clearly, um, our tax collector's bailiwick there. It is possible fewer people are participating first 30 days, um, and it were otherwise known as the discount period, due to cash flow concerns relative to employment.
I'm sorry, actually, let, let me rephrase the question. I don't think I worded it well. In the Treasurer's Report for, in the month of April, we don't have any, any, um, uh, real estate taxes yet. Is that purely just an accounting transactional that the, the, those records haven't yet flowed through our books just to be present on our Treasurer's Report yet?
Correct. That's a vastly deep question. I can answer that. Collector, uh, Dennis Mulhern makes his deposit, uh, on the last day of each month, so.
I got you.
There's been no, he does it once and he does it on the last day. And so there would be $0 shown in that category for April right up until the last day of April.
Okay, perfect. That answers that question because it looks like, you know, uh, to year-to-date, you know, it, it's, it's doing fairly, fairly well. Uh, again, you know, I think just, uh, just, just general thought, you know, um, and maybe it should be something where the Budget Committee that, that was, that took place last fall for this budget should reconvene and just think about what are the implications, since it's such a significant market change, um, in thoughts around the, the impact of the budget for the remainder of 2020, uh, just a thought.
All right. So no other questions on the Treasurer's Report, then?
Nope.
Okay, then can we get a motion on that, Jason?
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report and to pay the bills.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Staff Committee reports. Building Inspector's report.
Thank you. For the month of March, there were a total of 14 permits issued, one zoning permit issued. There were 15, sorry, 16 use and occupancy permits issued, total of 79 inspections. Obviously, the number of UNO permits and inspections has decreased because of the COVID-19 situation. We did agree to inspect a total of seven homes, two single-family dwellings and five townhomes in the states of Downford Station Development, after those are completed, which the last ones do this Friday. The rest of the construction is on hold until the governor allows certain businesses to reopen. Total fees collected for the month of March, $5,305. That's respectfully submitted, Niran King.
Okay. Now we're going to go on to the East Brandywine, and actually, we already went through this. Chief, do you have anything else to update on that besides what we have?
I just wanted to touch on one thing, Kyle, because there was a new order put out yesterday by Governor Wolf, and it has to do with masking. And since we're putting this on YouTube, I just want to let everyone know. The order starts Sunday night at 8:00 PM. And what it says is that if you are out in public, you are around people, if you are within the confines of your business, stores, whatever, you should be masked up. And I did, we've taken steps in here in the Police Department to comply with that. I just want to make you guys aware of that, because I wasn't sure if everyone had really read the new order. I also reached out to Chad Cropper today from Cropp's, because he did have a concern regarding the way the order was written, and some of the parameters that he's dealing with, because they don't offer certain services, that kind of got a little bit of a waiver in the writing of the order. So pretty much, I just want everyone to understand, and this is for our residents and the public that travel to Croppers, that go into Croppers, you will have to wear a mask or some type of facial covering in Cropp's beginning Sunday night at 8:00 PM. And there are very few exceptions. If you have a medical condition that prevents you from wearing one, and I would assume something like, you know, you wear oxygen, something like that, and then children under two years old are not required to be masked. But that is something I clarified today with the Secretary from the Department of Health, and I did touch bases with Chester County Health Department, and I did convey that to Chad. So, you know, we told Chad, listen, any problems, just give us a call. Let us come up. Let us handle things. I want to commend our residents, because under the stay-at-home orders, if I got kids at home and I'm about ready to pull my hair out, what's left of it. And so I want to just commend everybody, because we have, we have had some calls about violations of the stay-at-home order, but there's been nothing major. And so far, everything's going well. All the officers are well. I just wanted to commend them for the response that they had Tuesday, two weeks ago, on the domestic shooting we had. The department was outstanding. Everyone that responded was outstanding. That thing went very well, and it could have been a lot worse. I do want to also just mention that we have started a Twitter account now to get information out to our public quicker. We found it necessary through talking to some of the residents, that a lot of them weren't on Facebooks, but they are on Twitter. So we have started a Twitter account. It is @EBTPD. And you can follow us on that if you do not use Facebook. And we're really mirroring everything that we put on Facebook on Twitter. Other than that, that is it.
Thank you, Chief. All right. So now we're going to turn it over to the Fire Department for their company report.
Joe, do we need to, I can't, I don't know if you're talking. I can't hear you.
You didn't hear all that?
I heard that last, you hear all that?
Ken would box that I'm technically challenged, but I think the fire chief actually logged into the meeting. I just want to give it tonight. Vince, are you there?
Vince is present in the meeting. I have not promoted him to be a speaker, although I'm happy to do so. Please stand by.
Yes, I can. How are you? All right. So the fire company report for the month of March, obviously, these numbers are pretty low. So the social distancing and the stay-at-home orders, like Chief Cozy has said, have seemed to be working. So we've had a total of 62 incidents for the month, 27 of those which were fire-related, 35 medical-related. We ran a total of 11 fire calls and 15 medical calls in East Brandywine Township, seven fire calls and 18 medical calls in West Brandywine, one fire call and one medical call in Upper Yuclen Township. We responded mutual aid to Cowan once, Honeybrook once, Wallace Township five times, West Whiteland Township one time. An average number of 13.8 people in attendance per call. Our fuel usage for the month was 110 gallons of fuel from East Brandywine Township, 59 gallons from West Brandywine Township, for a total of 169. Our estimated fire damage for the month was $3,000. No related injuries or fatalities. We did have three training sessions with an average number of 23 people in attendance at each training session. Obviously, I know pretty much most of you have driven past a fire station over the past four or five weeks, and it looks a bit as a ghost town, due to some of the restrictions we have put in place to try and keep our members and their families safe during this COVID-19 process. So currently, the station is under, I'd say, lock and key, unless there's a true emergency that needs to be responded to. We enacted, I'd say, some pretty strict and severe guidelines to combat the COVID-19 inside the station for sanitizing purposes. And as the Chief alluded to, we, our members are required to wear masks in the apparatus and on calls, and have a whole list of questions or to ask residents prior to entering the home. So we're trying to keep all of our people safe, as well as the community, and as well, at the same time, be able to provide that high-quality level of service. So that's the fire company's report. If you guys have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
No, I don't, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to, obviously, tell both Chief Kosky and yourself, Chief Vince, what you guys have been doing. I've got nothing but great compliments from both of your departments, and great work, and we really appreciate everything you're doing for our safety.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. I will relay the message to the guys.
Thank you very much. Okay, old business. We have a trash collection for Luke Revan for 96 gallons per week trash.
All right. This is a follow-up to a conversation we had at the last physical meeting we were able to host. We had a resident present from the Cumberland, I'm sorry, from the Hopewell Development, who had concerns about his trash not being collected in its entirety. We've since had a number of other individuals express similar concerns. We're up to four now. The gist of the problem is that multiple residents are upset that their collection, which is in excess of our limits, is not being collected. They report that they put out the same amount through the, through the contract of the previous hauler, which was Republic Services, and it was collected without a problem. The most typical arrangement that this, that these homeowners have is two 96-gallon carts. The hauler is picking up one and leaving the other. The hauler is enforcing our contract as it's written. And while I'm sympathetic to the fact that these occurrences appear like a policy change, the fact of the matter is, the limit was a component of both the current and the old contracts. I've got just a series of four potential solutions we can talk about, as I think you're right, this is about changing public policy. First off, we changed nothing. We don't, we don't change our services, the waste hauler contract or the township ordinance. The hauler, the resident who had half of their stuff picked up has two options. One, they can wait for the monthly bulk collection and put their second cart out, and it will be collected according to our policy. The other is that on occasions when they are over limit, they may contract with any licensed hauler to come and pick it up. A.J. Blazinski is willing to do that. They quoted me a price of approximately $15, but the amount is determined on a case-by-case basis. So this is the path of least resistance, which is more or less stick to our guns on, on the contract, the ordinance, and the way we provide services. Second option is to allow residents to purchase double service, essentially. This would be, it would be consistent with our current contract. It would be $165 a year. The fee can be prorated for any portion of the year in which they join. We do have a precedent for this. The tax collector is collecting the trash and recycling fees in any whole number between zero and 10. There are parcels that have multiple units, and so we have a precedent for doing this. Initially, the tax collector expressed some concerns about doing this, mostly because there'd be no way for, let's say that the home sold, there'd be no way to know that the new resident also wanted double service, and for any length of time could be paying for two stops, which would be a problem. In discussion with the tax collector, I think a workaround would be that if we did something like this, we would need to send a mailing to the residents in late, say, November of each year, determine if they want to continue. And that way, the correct billing amount can be placed on their tax bills, which are mailed on the 1st of March. On A.J. Blazinski's side, they need only know a list of the parcels that are participating, so that they won't enforce the over limit on those stops. All right. The third option is to, in the ordinance and in the contract, amend the volume limits that we've specified. We had a brief conversation the last time that this, we discussed a similar option, and it was noted that it's, it's possible that this could be perceived as a substantial change to the bid package that we advertised. And so a hauler who did not receive the contract may have an objection to us making an amendment to the waste hauler contract. So. And then lastly, there is a, there is a precedent for whole developments, but not individual residents to opt out of the curbside trash and recycling service altogether. Generally, these are high-density developments where they are sharing higher-volume containers. But we, we do have parcels that have trash and no recycling, or recycling and no trash. So those are possible, but we, we're not doing that on a, on an individual homeowner level. So I, 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 I kind of added this, this is a discussion item for the Board. I don't know if there's any initial thoughts on, on offering any or all of these options to Township Presidents who are complaining about the enforcement of our trash limits.
Luke, I guess the one question I have is, and maybe it could be, maybe marrying one or two of these proposals together, but what if the, what if the resident wanted to deal directly with A.J. Blazinski and set up a every month type situation where they're, they know they're going to have maybe once or twice a month, they're going to be over the limit? Maybe they could work out, part out a deal with A.J. Blazinski, say, $100 for the year, but they weren't going to have it every month? Is that an option, do you think?
They can, they can enter into whatever private contract they would like. I would say, if we're talking about using A.J. Blazinski, the part of that inconvenience is, A.J. Blazinski needs to keep the trash they collect on contract, the township contract, separate from that they collect as a, as a, as a private arrangement with an individual homeowner. Because we pay the tipping fee on the truck that is on contract collected, and they pay the tipping fees on their private trucks.
So the $1.65 we're paying, you're confident it's going to be the $1.65 per resident? Or if they called them directly, you think they would get a better price directly, because they're already there, they're already in the neighborhood?
Well, I don't know that they are. You could, they do service that neighborhood, but they, they can't use the same truck. Therefore, I don't know that there's any savings.
Oh, wow. I got you.
And the $1.65 figure, I'm sorry, Ken, the $1.65 figure is what tax, the taxpayers pay each year for, for curbside trash.
So, two thoughts. Number one, I think, obviously, about four residents have come, come forward. One actually emailed us just like two days ago. I think, number one, I'd be interested, obviously, in, you know, it sounds like it is a small population, or at least a small population that's at least been vocal about it, about what some of their thoughts are. But as far as economies of scale, the scenarios that are presented, it sounds like these individuals consistently have the two 96 gallons. So, you know, if they're, if, what they're being quoted, $15 or whatever, a pickup, you know, from A.J., you know, versus, you know, a second stop basically on our own contract, they're able to get it at, you know, my quick math here, $3 and some change per week versus the 15. So there's huge economies of scale by us offering the double pickup per household for folks that are interested in it, to the extent we can manage that logistically. But as far as for discussion points for here, I'd be interested in sharing some of this feedback with some of the residents that have expressed concerns, and getting some of their thoughts on it.
So can I offer this service to a resident who, I, I'm, quite frankly, if they're disappointed that the, the limit is what it is, and my counteroffer is, I'll bill you twice as much and take it. That's, that's not exactly a sweet deal, but I do feel like that is us trying to respond to individual homeowners who routinely are over limit.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, myself, especially now with everybody home, filling the trash can is not, not hard to do. But, but no, I, you know, I may go that route myself, because I continuously fill the trash can.
But Luke, to clarify, I think you're, one of your original points, though, is, is, is we have a significant contract issue that we're not physically that we're not physically capable of really changing our limits without rebidding the contract, right? So it sounds like that first, that it's not even a solution that's on the table. Is that a correct statement?
That was number three on the list, and I would not, I put it on there in the interest of presenting to the board a full list of possibilities. I would not encourage number three, which is amend the volume limits with both the waste hauler and the contract, because it may be perceived as a substantial change to the contract. So the last time we had sealed bids, for example, a hauler that narrowly missed winning the contract may say, well, if I'd have known you were going to do that, I would have bid less and challenged that, which is why I would encourage us to steer clear of number three.
Anybody else? Jason, you have?
No, I mean, I just see really more, I mean, I just, I kind of saw this, so I don't really know what we are permitted to do or we aren't, and, you know, how many different residents in different areas in the township or it's all in one local neighborhood.
All right. Is this an action item you need tonight, Luke?
Well, I would leave it at this. I can get in touch with those residents who have said they're dissatisfied and offer them essentially to participate in the number two and see if there's any of them who would be interested in doing that. I just don't offer them that without the board's consent.
Right. I think that's a good idea. If we've had four people, it's not like you're calling 100 people out, but maybe if you want to reach out to those four. And I'm assuming the gentleman that was at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, from, I think he was from Hopewell, but I could be wrong. One of the four?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So let's do that. I'm okay with that. You guys okay?
Yep. I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And then new business, the review and signature prior to DCNR Contract for Phases One and Two Site Work, Bonsville Mill. I'm going to ask you if you could bring up Hud for this. Luke, that'd be great.
Done. Hi Hud.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, invited guests. I'm here to review with you the current grant that was awarded last year from DCNR for Phases One and Two. They require an agreement to be signed before they begin awarding or allowing us to put the job out to bid. So I've been working on that with Mr. Buck Sala, with Nate Klein, and with our representative from the DCNR, who is Sherry Matter. And if you recall, this grant that was awarded is for one half of the amount of the total, the total being $447,000. The county picked up 40% and the township is in for 10. So this is the larger nut to crack as far as amounts of money being spent. However, I checked with Nate today, Nate Klein, and I was on a conference call with Mr. Buck Sala, and all of the action items on his end have been satisfied as far as us proceeding to bid. This is essentially the last one that we have to have before DCNR will allow us to put the contract out for bid. So we're very excited that this hopefully will mean that we're advertising here towards the end of April. We'll have a pre-bid meeting in early May. Possibly we can make the bids due by mid-May to end of May and then come back to you in your May meeting to have the awards. But my guess is that with COVID and everything, we're going to be pushed back a month, but we're still, according to Nate, we're on target. So before you is the grant agreement, which hopefully you've had time to review. It essentially affirms everything we've done up till this date to get started over there with the removal of the concrete and the installation of amended soils at the Bonsville Mill Park.
All right. Sorry, I was up with Luke. So I heard everything. I don't know if anybody has any questions. First of all, I think you guys are doing a fantastic job in all the grants.
Thank you.
Ken or Jason, anything?
I apologize if I'm getting agenda items mixed up here, but there were two photographs in our packet. It's item number 11B and item number, I think they're both big, but it's the two pictures of the proposed parking lot?
Yeah, that's coming up next.
Oh, that's next. Okay.
Yeah, we're just talking about the grant award and the contract right now.
So to clarify, this is the grant award for, this is the contract basically executing the action for the grant that was received last year, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. No other questions from me?
Jason?
Nope.
Do you want to make a motion out on that?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to sign Phase One and Phase Two Grant for Bonsville Mill Park.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You have your next one now?
I'm ready. So action item 11B on your agenda is for the parking that we currently have at Bonsville Mill, which we'll have to do for the next two seasons, which, you know, this season has been interesting because of COVID. The use of that park has been doubled, I would say. I go there with my dog and I see a lot of other people there. Fortunately, as of yet, there haven't been any real catastrophes as far as parking. I think everybody has really worked well to make sure that there's ingress and egress, although sometimes there is not. And what the chief is referring to is that on the northern entrance of this photograph, where it says entrance, sometimes folks park, I don't know, can you, you see that at all?
Well, we have the picture of the map with the cars in the circles. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I don't have to hold it up. All right. So this is what I'm talking about. I'm talking about this piece right here as generally a problem area. People come along and they park up in here and block ingress and egress. So the chief is mentioning that, and I think it's a good point. Yeah. So where it says entrance, it's actually to the left of your photograph. You have individuals who park there and block that ingress and egress, which causes a problem if there's a similar blockage at the, where it says exit. So our proposal is, and we don't have to work on the configuration right now, but our proposal is A, get organized, B, install some type of wheel stops, and C, possibly issue permits. One, for the six units that are in the center of the Bonsville Mill townhomes that are there. The end units have their own parking. You've got six units in the center, though, that basically use the Bonsville Mill Park as their only place that they can park their vehicles. And we've had some feedback from some individuals. One of the people that got back to me after we sent out drafts these letters said, well, that's fine, one per unit, that makes sense, but a lot of these people have two vehicles. Then what? The answer to that is going to be up to the board. My suggestion is if they have two vehicles, it is rare that we have an event there now that would take up all of these spaces. But in the event that there is, we could send out written technological or electronical notice to the individuals that they provide us their information, that they've got to get that second vehicle out of there. Where can they go? Well, if they have two vehicles, they can drive one person up to the township building, drop that car off, bring it back, something along those lines, or park it in a neighbor's home. But that's really an issue for another day. What I really want to talk to the board about tonight is, or the letters that we want to send out to both the owners and the tenant/resident. There are two different letters before you. They've been worked on by myself, Mr. Buck Sala, Mr. Pierceall. In essence, they alert them to the fact that the township is going to consider putting some wheel stops in there for the purpose of getting organized. And number two, to consider making it one way in, one way out. So the ingress would be where it says entrance. The northern portion of Bonsville Road would be ingress only, and the egress would be down where it says exit. There's good sight distance from that side of the road. Owners on the other side and residents as well have complained there's not good sight distance for them trying to exit their properties, in particular the two end units. So there, a lot of near folks park across the street as well. So there's a lot of things to consider. But the letters, I think, should go out. I want to get approval or at least make final tweaks to it. But I want to get input from the chief and Mr. Van Lu at some point when we can meet out there to walk the premises and see how many cars we can fit in, make sure we're doing the right thing. But I think in the meantime, we should still get the letters out.
Yeah, I agree with you. Anything from you guys, Ken or Jason?
Yeah, I don't think that we can restrict them to amount of cars and to have someone drive up to the township and park in there for all this time now. You know, I don't think that's the right thing to do. I think that, you know, if anything, we should be concentrating on improving the other parking lot that's going to be the main use with the grant money now. That way, there's no issue with parking in the future. I was in the question that, that time, this was on the agenda, that Hud, that you're going to bring back some, you know, feedback from the residents saying that is okay. Yeah, so until I see that, I mean, I don't think I can support that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't think we're talking about trying to restrict anybody's right to use it right now. The purpose is to open a discussion. I'm sure we'll have people getting back to me, getting back to Mr. Buck Sala, possibly to the board, but I'd like there to be a unanimity of what we're trying to accomplish. And that is that until 2022, when the new parking lot comes online, we may have certain events there. And if we have an event that attracts a lot of vehicles, we have to have a contingency plan as to what we're going to do. You know, so far, you've only had two or three of those where we've had more vehicles than we have spaces. But I think even after we're done with Phase Four, which is the new parking lot, we still should have some organized parking over there, and maybe that parking won't restrict use by the residents. But that's entirely up to the board because it's township property and you're right, people have been parking there for years and they've come to depend on it. But on the other hand, as our solicitor probably would weigh in, there's some risk to that and no reward. And we want to keep the public safe, but on the other hand, it has to be safe and has to be reasonable. So at this point, the letters, I think, open the subject up for discussion and we can see what happens after that.
So I'll add my two cents in here as well. I think organizing the parking lot is critical, right? Because you're trying to maximize space. But I would agree with Jason. I'm not at a spot yet that I would necessarily be want to suggest restricting use primarily because they have been using it. And I haven't necessarily heard that there's really an effective alternative for folks. So it doesn't sound like there's necessarily enough information yet to suggest anything like that. So, you know, and you have identified it. I'm a little bit sort of not full on what the position is because you suggested it's only during peak events, but then you're also suggesting there's additional, that there's risk out there. So I don't know if you mean the risk is year round or just during the peak events. But without additional insight, you know, I don't know if I, I know, I would not suggest or support restriction of use of one vehicle at this point.
So what I hear the board saying is we should delete that portion of the letter. I can come back with a new version of it. I would still like to solicit input from the chief and from Mr. Van Lu. I think it's important that we solicit the opinions of the residents and the owners as well and just make, hopefully, a consensus that something needs to be done and then work on it from there.
Yeah, and I want to be clear to the board. I don't think anybody's insinuating that we yank the carpet from underneath these residents. I was under the impression this is a once a year event where it is township property. Township needs it for our safety to get visitors into the park, that we would ask the residents to work with us for that one day. I didn't take this to be something that would be every week they need to move their cars and we're going to take that spot from them. I didn't hear it that way.
Okay. Fair enough.
Okay, great.
Changes and bring it back.
Thank you. Turn it over to Luke now for the application appointment of Ed Houston to the Open Space Committee.
All right. My apologies. We did have public comment on item 11B. I have promoted committee chairman Jim Buck Sala to speak on this. If, Mr. Chairman, if you would like to recognize Jim Buck Sala.
Absolutely. Mr. Buck Sala, sorry about that. We're doing this on the computers now, and I just looked to my left and I saw that you had a comment. So it was not an action item for us to vote on tonight, but please give us your input.
While we're working on the audio, let me read aloud the comment that was in the chat feature that those watching this recorded video will not see. Mr. Buck Sala, who is the chairman of the Bonsville Mill Committee, indicated that the Phase Four parking lot is scheduled for 2021, and the parking restrictions that were discussed as part of this agenda item are for the near term. And that the events that the committee is currently hosting at the site do result in a full parking lot. And with, I think with that, we could probably move on. And if I'm able to get Jim's audio working, we'll come back later.
Go ahead, chief.
Chief Edwards has asked me to pass on that he would also like the fire company involved with the planning with Matt and I so that they can make sure that a full-size engine can fit in and out of the lot.
Agreed. Thank you. Okay, so Luke, if you could let Hud and Jim know that, that'd be great. Anyway, Luke, for the appointment of Ed Houston to the Open Space Committee for discussion.
Yeah, it's my pleasure as the staff liaison to the Open Space Committee to announce that the committee is recommending to the board of supervisors that resident Ed Houston be appointed as a member of that committee. Mr. Houston's application packet was in your agenda packet this evening. So at this time, I'd respectfully ask the board to appoint a new member to the Open Space Committee.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ed Houston to the Open Space Committee.
And as the board liaison, I attended their meeting this month, and I think he would be a great addition as well. So I will second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't think we have any subdivision zoning tonight, but we do have ordinances with resolutions for consideration. Resolution 08 of 2020 Designating Emergency Service Providers for East Braywine Township. If we have anybody who represents fire departments that would like to be part of this conversation, I'd ask Luke if you can join them with us.
Yeah, we, earlier when I solicited comment, in the audience is Mr. John Sly, who would like to address the board on this matter. I do not actually have an audio connection for him as well, but let me work on that. There's much to discuss before the public portion. If you'd like Scott to introduce this.
All right, Scott, go ahead. All right, Scott, go ahead, please. Get your microphone on, Scott.
Sorry.
Nope, all good.
I keep getting feedback from, from Luke in the other side of the room. I was contacted by John Sly approximately 10 days ago. Asked him to send the board an email explaining what, what his purpose was for amending the resolution that was enacted by the board, I believe it was resolution one of 2020, which designates emergency service providers for East Brandywine Township. Since that time, Westwood Fire Company's ambulance division has added advanced life support service to their basic life support services that's provided to one, one portion of East Brandywine Township, which is part of the Apple Cross development and the, what would be the southwest corner of the township bordered by East Reeseville Road, Zinn Road, and Hatfield and North Bailey Roads. And the purpose of this was, as I understood it, to add the ALS service so that Westwood would be recognized by the county's CAD system as an ALS provider. For other calls where the other providers, Minkwes Ambulance and Medic 93 from Brandywine Hospital were not available. So Luke, do you have Mr. Sly's audio?
We are working on getting, he, he is joining us by iPad, but I'm not picking up a microphone feed. We've got a call coming in right now. We'll get this worked out.
Okay. I know there, there's more to this than I was aware of as far as the county's CAD system. And that's why I suggested that Chief D'Amico, John Sly, and also Fred Worster from Minkwes Ambulance participate in this discussion.
All right, and, and Luke pulled up the audio right now. Does the Department of East Brandywine have any comment on this right now?
Yeah, so, so I had a, I had multiple conversations throughout last evening and this afternoon and this morning due to the fact that, you know, just getting this all out via email last night at 6:30, trying to get all the, the information and logistics behind it to make sure that the decisions that are being made are, you know, with all the data and information that we could possibly have, so we know we're making the right decisions. Like, like the providers, providers saw the email chain from our discussion last evening. I did have a conversation with Mr. Sly, got his feedback and his information. After that, though, I've had, I would say numerous conversations today on the phone with members of Chester County Emergency Services and some other EMS providers. So I'm, I'm sure Mr. Sly is going to give his presentation to the board once he gets on here. So I, I, I think from the fire company standpoint, my, my recommendation is based on the information that I was given this afternoon and throughout the day. There's really no need on, on the Board of Supervisors to make any changes to this resolution. As I stated in that original email, I think it would be beneficial to have a meeting with all the stakeholders at the table so we can know all the, the data, the ramifications of it. And we can, you know, proceed from there. I, I'll let Mr. Sly go through his notes and his topics of what he wants to say and then I can hop back in if you have any more questions after that.
Mr. Sly, this, but his phone is now live.
Okay. So Mr. Sly, if you're ready for your presentation, we're ready.
No problem. I'm apparently less technologically advanced than anybody else since I can't figure out how to get video and audio to work. So thanks for entertaining and thanks for the time. I did speak with Chief D'Amico last night. I spoke with Chief Worster from Minkwes Ambulance this afternoon. And I also have been on the phone with the Department of Emergency Services several times. Just the, the brief background on this, obviously I was there to present, to explain our ambulance services a few months ago. We did add paramedics onboard our ambulances as of yesterday and have upgraded our service. The, the impact on East Brandywine Township is probably less than any other, the, the other three municipalities that we cover. But my intent to contacting East Brandywine was to follow up on what we had discussed at the beginning of the year, to follow up with the township once we did receive our paramedic licensure to advise that we did meet that standard of care. My understanding is that the area of East Brandywine Township that we are dispatched to currently is also serviced by Medic 93 from Brandywine Hospital, who is very, very close proximity to that area. And we understand that that is the expectation that they will continue that. Through the Department of Emergency Services technical aspect, that's the, the part that I think we're all having trouble with here and I don't want to put any blame, but they are having difficulty in identifying who to dispatch where. And it's not specific to East Brandywine Township. It's, it's sort of globally because we also cover West Brandywine Township, Wallace Township, and West Callan Township. And until the county kind of gets direction from each municipality as to who they want to have dispatched, they're not making any changes. And then once the changes do need to be made, it's a fairly complex technical process. So I think we're trying to get everything done the correct way the first time so that we're not rehashing things. And, and right now, as it stands, we wouldn't be dispatched if any units were not available in East Brandywine. And we just kind of wanted to bring that to the board's attention. And speaking with Chief D'Amico last night, we do not wish to make any recommended changes to what is currently taking place today. And that is not our intent in this matter. It's just simply to recognize us as a valid responder should Medic 93 or Minkwes not be available to serve the township.
Okay. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, Scott, can you clarify for me in our current resolution? My understanding is our resolution identifies all primary responders only and identifies AVL, available units or secondary. Do we currently document any non-primary unit in our resolution today?
No, I don't believe so.
So why would this scenario require us to, to document a, not a secondary unit in our resolution?
Do you want me to answer that? I think I can, Supervisor Hader. The issue is that we are recognized as a basic life support provider in your resolution, but not an advanced life support provider. So it's a technical issue with the county's dispatch. They have to make, from what I was told, just to change the area of East Brandywine today to kind of trick the system to allow both Medic 93 to continue to respond as well as our unit as a BLS unit. It's about 150 changes that have to be made. And again, we're not recommending that we, we service any area that Medic 93 is currently servicing. But if, it, because we're recognized under one level and not another, we're trying to, to have all of our townships across the board evenly recognize us in, in the case of, of, you know, another unit not being available to respond.
And I guess my question for everybody on the fire department side is who, do we have, you know, somebody that's, that's in the neighboring vicinity that's able to help us with the ALS right now?
Kyle, part of what you said was broken up. Could you repeat that?
Yeah, I, I was asking if right now we do have somebody in a neighboring vicinity that's able to help us with the ALS.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
So I think, I think to go back to a couple of questions, I think this will help answer your question. As, as Mr. Sly has noted, he is correct that the county has to make 150 changes in the CAD system to send the two medic units being to the 4901 box, which is the area of concern. With those 150 changes being made and no change to our resolution, this, this would take care of the problem. Mr. Sly's MIQ unit would then be picked up via the AVL system once his unit's recognized in CAD. So whether we change the resolution to accommodate their services or not, once his unit is logged on the CAD as a MIQ and it's in the stream, it'll be available in CAD. So if Medic 93 and 46 are unavailable and they're the next closest unit, they will be sent to the call. If you look at the other side of our township on the 282 side, that's what comes into play when Minkwes and 93 are unavailable, MIQ 87 comes and covers the second or third call. And they're not recognized in our resolution. That's why we went with the AVL format to cover those second and third calls, to grab the closest unit, no matter where they are, wherever the call is dispatched to. So I, I think, I think in an effort to, that, that this, and twofold, one, it, it allows the unit to be recognized in the resolution, but at the same time, from a technological standpoint, it does help the county with making this change. But really, as Mr. Sly alluded to, this really, is really no massive impact to us with making this change of the resolution if it stays the same due to the fact that ultimately we're not looking to use the service of the ALS aspect and replace 93. We still would like Medic 93 to respond to those calls. The 150 CAD changes have to be done no matter what, whether they're in the resolution or not, so we can make that happen. So, so from my standpoint, I, I think that the 150 changes need to be made to the CAD system and the resolution stays as it is. And when we have more time and get the stakeholders at the table to sit down and meet about it and come up with a, a better plan, you know, then, then we can proceed and move forward if this is something we want to entertain. But ultimately, it's up to the Board of Supervisors to make that decision. The fire company is just here to give you our recommendation, our thoughts, you know, and, and surely do understand where, where Mr. Sly is coming from. He's trying to run a business. He's trying to get his units up and running. So, you know, if you have any other questions, I, I got a bunch of information today, so.
Yeah, I think my main question was to make sure that the citizens of East Brandywine are covered. And that's my, my, my only concern at this point. You're saying that it's not an action item, our residents, and then, then I, you know, I, I'm leaning toward what our local department wants. Luke or, I'm sorry, Jason or?
Yeah, I, Kyle, I agree with you. At this point in time, I do not see a need for a change in the resolution. I think, you know, this, as, as mentioned, this just came up last night. I think folks still need to have conversations. It sounds like this is, is not a change that's intended to support our residents, but rather administrative red tape. And I, I have to imagine there's other ways around red tape issues than us declaring changes in our resolution of services. So at this point, I'm not, I don't see a need to entertain a change.
All right, and Jason?
I, I agree with both of you, I think, as well as Vinta thought that, you know, later on, we could sit down and talk about it more once all the stakeholders are involved. And at, at this point, I don't think that we should change the resolution.
All right, so at this point, let's leave it as not an, an action item tonight and leave it up for discussion because I, I would like more time than 24 hours notice to, to make a resolution anyway to properly understand everybody's side of the story. So if that's all right with everybody, maybe we can revisit this in a couple of weeks, sit down a little bit, and we have an opportunity to speak with both sides.
Yeah, John, again, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the opportunity. Again, a lot of this is kind of outside of everyone that's involved in this conversation's control. It's more of a technical aspect with the county. The one item that was brought to our attention was that Medic 93, which is at Brandywine Hospital, also has units located in Parksburg and Morgantown. And well, if they are not available at Brandywine Hospital, you would be waiting for a paramedic from Parksburg to respond to East Brandywine. That was our point of the concern in that if, if these 150 changes need to be made at the county's request, they would like to not do it three times. They'd like to do it all at once. I'm fully in agreement with sitting down and doing our best during social distancing to, to discuss the matter with all the stakeholders. But I, I wanted to make everyone aware that there is a potential that without a change being made, that you will be waiting for a paramedic from Parksburg to come because Medic 93 is recognized and Westwood is not. So that's essentially my whole point. And again, it's a technical aspect with the county.
So, so I'd like to get further clarification. I, I don't know what the, the means is if we can get some kind of document or communication from the county or a meeting with the county. I've, I've been involved in the emergency services for quite a while now, and I just don't know if that's an accurate statement. Because again, we have, we have AVL services and secondary services that we have designed around the closest available unit. Our, our, our primary goal has always been around closest available unit. So I would like to get further information or documentation from the county around that statement.
Yeah, Mr. Hader, I confirm that at 5:30 tonight with the county on a group call. And I'm sure Chief D'Amico might have some comment on that. And I certainly would do my, my best to get some clarification from the county to you on that basis. But that's another issue we're dealing with in, in neighboring municipalities. And that's, again, why I kind of wanted to bring this forward.
Okay, so let's leave this as to be continued and, go ahead, Chief.
I, I just want to clarify something that I thought I heard. Did he say that if the other unit's not available and they're sitting at their station, they're not going to respond because of this resolution?
As of today, that's correct until the changes are made by the county in the CAD. But again, that's outside of all of our control here. It's a, it's a timeline for implementation with the county.
Well, I think this, earlier today, I had written the same question down to, to everyone and I believe Euclid would, would be there and it would be whoever's, you know, who's the area. So I don't really, I don't really think that that would be a fair statement as well.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure I agree with that. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just real quick, the, there's also, we can get some more information and clarification on, you know, what Mr. Sly is talking about with this 93 unit in the different locations. It's not a very uncommon practice for EMS units to float throughout territories and jump between municipalities to make up some coverage areas. So, you know, it's, as Mr. Sly can probably tell you, he moves an ambulance around to cover geographically so he can cover his territory a little bit better from time to time too. So I'm pretty sure that the folks at Medic 93 will do the same thing, you know, noticing the fact that they're on second or third calls. But we can also partner in Leo Skacia, who's the head of the medic unit at 93, when we do have that follow-up meeting with all the stakeholders so we can get a better understanding of their company's policies and their procedures, just to give, you know, the Board of Supervisors a little bit better of an understanding. So just something just to keep in the back of your mind, so.
Yeah, and I know you guys are all a close, in all departments, and I'm sure it would be the manner of making a phone call, an emergency situation, we would be good. But I, I appreciate everybody for today. I think the best opportunity for us to get together and maybe get some more clarification from the county on this. And then we revisit this for the next meeting if possible. Four hours is just a little tight to, to everybody. But thank you all for, for your, your input and we'll, we'll revisit this.
Thanks for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Scott now. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Scott now for Resolution 10, 2020, Declaration of Local Level Emergency Disaster for the Declaration for Coronavirus 19 Pandemic.
Thank you. This is basically the same resolution that was passed in March, March 27th. Resolution 6 of 2010 basically said the same thing. The only difference in sub-paragraph B at the bottom of page one was that it recognizes that the, there was a resolution that was passed by the board on March 27th. That Resolution 6 had an expiration date of April 30th of 2020. This resolution, because we're not sure at this point when the disaster declaration will actually be lifted by the state. So Solicitor Kristin Camp had suggested that instead of putting a date certain when the, this resolution would expire or be amended by the board, she suggested that it simply be extended pending further declaration by the Board of Supervisors. So if the pandemic continues on past the end of May, this is covered, and we don't have to do that again until such time as the board makes a decision to declare the pandemic or the disaster or emergency clear.
Okay, and I see we have Kristin and Tom here. So Kristin, I'm sorry, I just interrupted you. You were going to pop into that answer my next question. Did you, either you have any comments on this?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, no, I had looked at the resolution. My only comment was what Scott just explained, and everybody's sort of guessing when we're going to be out of this. I think you just leave it open-ended. Once you are comfortable that the declaration of disaster can terminate, then you can just state that at your next meeting, at, you know, the next opportunity.
Okay, Ken or Jason, either of you guys have any questions?
Nope, no questions.
No questions. I'd like to make a motion. Well, actually, I do have a question. Would this be Resolution 10 or Resolution 8?
I actually have, as a point of order on that, I would like what is currently on the schedule as Resolution 11 of 2020, if it is the board's pleasure to adopt it, be renumbered 8 so that we have a sequential count. We're going to have to rewrite 11, what is on the agenda as 11, as 20 prior to board signatures anyway. So I'd like to keep this resolution as 10 and then have 11 become 8.
Understood. Okay, I understand. So keep this as 10, but then the next one, if we approve, it would be 8?
Correct. That way, we won't have a resolution book with a gap because we tabled 8.
Oh, I understand, okay. Well, I'd like to make a resolution, I'd like to make an emergency resolution 10 of 2020 for Declaration of Level Disaster for the Coronavirus to extending the emergency declaration until the board declares it not emergency anymore.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, is HUD still on the phone?
Yeah, I'm going to chime in here. As a point of order, we have both HUD, and at this point, we've been able to troubleshoot Jim's problems, and he joins us by phone as well.
Okay, so I guess if, why don't we do this? Let's go to HUD first, and then we'll do Jim's comments unless he has something regarding the resolution. Do Jim's comments under the public comment for agenda items. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to HUD for Resolution 11 of 2020 to support the DCNR grant application for Phase 2, for Phases 3 and 4 of the Bonsville Mill Improvement Project.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and invited guests. As the Grant Chairman of the Bonsville Mill Committee, we've been successful in three out of our four applications so far. Hopefully, we'll be able to hit for the cycle here. If we get this grant through, and we're applying for it next Wednesday, it'll complete the total, total grant commitments by the county and state to close to $700,000. The grant document you have before you is one that just indicates your support for the grant application that is seeking roughly $117,000 from the state under their C2P2 grant application process. It does not obligate the township to any grant subsidies or matches. So in this time of, you know, economic need with CB19, that's certainly a good thing. And then if we get this grant, which I'm confident we will, we will have the amount of money necessary to complete both the plantings and the parking lot by next year, and that should really give us a really nice facility, a unique facility. That's why we're getting a lot of support. You'll also see in front of you a screenshot of a document, actually, a screenshot of a question I have to answer on behalf of the board, which is that the board supports the application. In addition to the resolution, there's this checkoff. And I think last year, we brought it up in front of the board, obviously in person, and I was given authorization to go ahead and check that box, but that's why I screenshotted that and would just ask that you support that. Obviously, I can change the name of the chairman, given what's happened tonight, and I will do that when I get back to the office tomorrow. So I'm looking for support of both the Resolution Number 8, I guess it'll be renumbered, to support Phase 3 and 4 application for DCNR C2P2 grant, and also authorization to allow me to assign that checkbox on behalf of the board.
This is Jim. The checkbox is on the online application. It is the grant agreement signature page.
Correct.
So the official of the township needs to sign that. That would be the chairman of the board. Have that box checked.
Yeah, Deb, any questions from Jason or Ken on this?
No questions.
I'm sorry to keep interrupting here. I'm sharing a screen. That is, what appears in your packet is Resolution 11. Those sections that I've highlighted in yellow are the sections that I'd asked that the board amend in their motion to adopt. Instead of 11, it would be 8, and also the reference to the chairman, as HUD referenced, to be changed in any motion you make to adopt this.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion, 8 of 2020, with the change of Ken Hader as the chairman to, as Kyle, chairman, and them to go and submit that application for Phase 3 and 4 for Bonsville Mill Park.
All right, second?
Is that wrong?
Final, I want to thank the township for its support. As a result, we got the county grant already. That's why I said three out of four. So they're in for their half, and if we get the half from the state, we're all set. So thank you all for your help.
No, I think it's more important to thank you guys because I realize without your skills and getting these grants approved and all the volunteer work going on from the Bonsville Committee, this would be otherwise taxpayer money that we would use for this project. So I think it's your involvement in this, all of you, and for the great work, and thank you for applying for and acquiring these grants.
Thank you. It's going to be a great facility, a great day when it's open.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Now, do we want to open up for public comment? And I don't know if Jim, Jim has this, any public comment on the agenda items other than what he's just stated?
I do. I'd like to go back to the parking lot issue at Bonsville Mill Park.
Sure.
I think there's a benefit to issuing the letters to the owners and the residents just so we're all on the same page as far as the parking lot usage. It will at least make them more aware that they need to use the parking lot efficiently and make them fully aware that that lot is owned by the township, and we are allowing them to use it. If you're uncomfortable with the limitation of one vehicle per unit, perhaps we can just pull that from the letter. But generally speaking, there's a lot of good language in there that puts everybody on the same page. So I would encourage that you consider approving those letters so that we can at least make them aware of what's happening.
Yeah, and I think the way that we left it was HUD was going to tweak the letter a little bit and then submit it back to us, and then we would then make a motion to approve or not approve. But I do think that, clearly, as the rest of the board members have stated, we want to be good stewards to our neighbors and our residents, and no one's trying to push them out of the parking lot. In my opinion, it would just be if we had a function one or two a year, we would ask them to work with us if they possibly could, and that's how I understood the letter to be presented. But we'll.
The other thing there is that the parking lot is full every weekend, and we have had several events there just for this past fall, for example, where the lot has been full every time. So again, the focus is on being aware, using the space efficiently. It is filling now, and it's going to continue to be an issue, more of an issue as more and more people become aware of the park and usage goes up. And that really won't be alleviated until we get to Phase 4 of the project where we install the larger parking lot to the south of the building.
Understood. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate the comment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other public comment on agenda items that you can?
No further parties have asked to be recognized.
Okay, so I just wanted to make a notice that Executive Council of the Board of Supervisors will be held remotely following this meeting to discuss personnel and litigation matters. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.